And welcome to the regular meeting of the Lakeport City Council for June 2nd, 2015. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Turner presents.
Councilmember Matina here.
Councilmember Parlet.
Here.
Councilmember Stoman.
Here.
Mayor Shill.
Here.
Kevin, would you like to make some pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I apologize for the late start. We had a budget workshop that we had to terminate early. It was running a little bit long. For those of you wishing to speak publicly tonight on any agenda item, you may do so as we are taking up that item when I ask for public comment. If there is an item that is not on the agenda tonight but under our jurisdiction here at the Lakeport City Council, you may fill out a white form on the table when you enter council chambers and hand that to the clerk, and you may speak for up to three minutes during open public comment, but please understand that any item that is not posted on tonight's agenda, council cannot come to consensus or have much of a discussion on those items. With that being said, we have an acceptance of the agenda. Any urgency items this evening?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda.
Second, then?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, our consent agenda is the next item this evening. These items are usually considered routine and non-controversial, and this evening we have three items. We have our ordinances, which we will waive the reading except by title. We will be approving the warrant registers from May 19th, 2015, and approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting of May 19th, 2015. Any councilmen who wish to pull any of those items? Seeing none, any member from the public wish to have a comment on any of those items? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for a motion.
We have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do you have any public presentations tonight?
No, so just a little bit.
I thought I saw one sheet.
It was something on the agenda.
Okay. We will move next on to our public hearing. Item A, this is a general plan amendment and zone change. Mr. Ingram?
Great, good evening, everybody. The project before you tonight consists of three separate parts: a general plan amendment, a zone change, and approval of environmental review in regards to property located at 2025 South Main Street. The general plan amendment is from retail, from major retail to public and civic uses, and the zone change also consistent from major retail to public and civic uses. A legal notice for tonight's public hearing was prepared and noticed in local papers and provided to property owners residing within 300 feet of the subject property, and in addition, notification to both the Big Valley and Scotts Valley tribes were provided in accordance with SB 18, and we received no requests or consultation regarding this project. The planning commission reviewed this project at its regular April 8th meeting, and after some general discussion on nuisance activities occurring at the bus stop, made a recommendation that the city council approve the general plan amendment and zoning change and adopt a negative declaration for this project. Additionally, the planning commission also reported that this project was consistent with the general plan as required for the zoning ordinance, subject to your council's approval. Just to put it over you, I know I gave kind of a similar overview to you guys last time, but just for the general public's benefit, and feel free to ask any questions along the way. As this council is well aware, the existing police station at the corner of North Forbes and Ninth Street is limited in its ability to serve the long-term needs of the Lakeport PD. The building is limited in size to meet the current and future staffing needs, but most notably, it's unable to provide adequate security to staff or meet the technological needs of a modern police force. These issues came to a serious head over the past year or so, as the Lakeport PD staff experienced several incidents whereby persons have come onto the facility grounds and made real threats to staff on-site. The physical layout of that facility makes it nearly impossible for staff to see anybody who's outside of the offices, and luckily, it didn't end in anything, any major incident, but it certainly could have, and that's a concerning role. Your council, at that time, directed staff to look into what was necessary to correct some of those issues with the existing site. When it became aware that it was going to be too costly, they directed staff to look at possible other sites for the relocation of the police department, and that's kind of the driving impediment for this general plan amendment and rezone tonight. The project site located at 2025 South Main Street, which is located within the existing Kmart shopping center, was identified as the best plausible alternative. The main reason, it's an existing 4,460 square foot building that was constructed in 2001, 2002, and was utilized for several years by the Social Security Administration for its Lake County residents. Social Security having now grown the site, moved a couple of years ago to their existing site on Parallel Drive, leaving this building vacant. The site is ideal for the relocation of the city's police services due to its previous use by a federal governmental agency. It provides good design and separate access for police staff and the general public, which is not possible at the current site, as well as a number of other amenities, I think, adequate area for officers to dress on-site, larger bathrooms, and separate bathrooms for the public in a separate waiting area in the existing configuration of that building. The current site, as I mentioned before, has the zoning designation in major retail. The proposed relocation of the police department to the site requires approval of this general plan amendment and zone change to public and civic uses. One of the questions that came up, and I know we discussed this last time, was some of the inquiries is that, well, if it was used as a federal government building before for social security, why do you need to do this general plan amendment and zone change? Well, the main reason is that building was being leased at that time, and it wasn't thought to be prudent to encumber that current owner with public and civic uses, and then if they left, not being able to offer it for a commercial building site. Now, given the fact that the city now owns it and is intending to use it for, you know, 20 or 30 years, or maybe even more, the best and suitable zoning for a police station is the public and civic uses for both the general plan amendment and the zone change. So, that kind of the driving factor on it. Your packet includes a draft ordinance and draft resolution for you guys' consideration this evening, and I can answer any questions.
Questions from council? All right, seeing none, at this time, this is a public hearing, so we will open up the public hearing for anyone that would like to come up and question or comment on the current item. Seeing none, we will then close the public hearing. If there is nothing further from council, we have a suggested motion that has three hearts. Not everybody wants.
I suggest you take them one at a time.
Individually, with a vote, okay.
That will reduce the amount of reading that each of you has to do.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a negative declaration to the City of Lakeport General Plan Amendment, GPA 15-01, and Zone Change, CC 15-01, project based on the information and findings contained in the initial study, Environmental Review, ER 15-01, and dated March 5th, 2015.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed general plan amendment from major retail to public civil uses, civic uses, with the findings contained in proposed resolution, the attachment one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I'll move to approve the proposed zone change from C2 major retail to PCU, public and civil use, with findings contained in the proposed ordinance, C attachment two.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. All right, we'll be moving on to council business. Item A from our city manager. Number one is the Beriasus Snow Mountain region.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city council is being asked to adopt the attached proposed resolution supporting the permanent protection of the Beriasus Snow Mountain region as a national monument. And before I go on and leave from the background staff report, I think we have Mr. Robert Miaschero in the audience that wants to do a presentation on this item, and I think we'll just move to that.
Robert, can I get a brief?
Yeah, what's the best way to meet up with this?
We can grab a stand.
Yeah, we can. We'll grab a stand for it. Have Victoria's arms go all asleep.
No, I've been using the stand for a while. My motivating stand.
Victoria, we do have a map in our packet, so, you know, feel free that that can be actually more shown at the time.
I don't think that would probably be profitable. There is also the same map that's going to be in.
Yeah, I have one here. I just wanted to show a bigger picture. Good evening, city council.
Hey, Kevin.
Okay, good evening, city council. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Robert Miaschero. I'm the campaign coordinator with conservation nonprofit called Tulbyomi.
Hey, Robert, could you come up to the microphone? Just because we're recording this, so that way it's part of the...
Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's right. You can pull that torch, it's pretty.
Okay, so good evening, once again, city council. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Robert Miaschero, and I am the campaign coordinator for Tulbyomi, a nonprofit that is working heavily on this issue.
Oh, you're the holder.
Oh, this side. There you go, okay. So, this issue, what we're talking about today is the permanent protection of the Beriasus Snow Mountain region. It's roughly 360,000 acres of federal public land, and we try to make it a national monument, which would do a couple different things, as suggested there, protect plants and animals, manage recreational impacts of public lands, impact on private lands, economic opportunities for gateway communities such as Lakeport, and better coordination between federal land management agencies. There are currently two land management agencies in this area, the US Forest Service, as you can see in the upper part of the green part, and the Bureau of Land Management in the southern end. So, what is a national monument? It's used to protect significantly important public lands. Basically, it's going to keep this area open for recreation, scientific study, and cultural studies, and that kind of thing. It allows for both agencies to work together. As of right now, the US Forest Service and the Bureau of Land Management don't really have a common boss, so this is kind of one way for them to make a landscape management plan. That's just the map. So, as you can see, the green part in the northern end is the US Forest Service, and then the Bureau of Land Management owns the gray brownish part on the southern end. So, these are some threats to the region, and what this mainly will do is it's a branding thing, and making these lands as a national monument puts them on another status, and puts them in the National Landscape Conservation System within the Bureau of Land Management, and they're qualified for more funding. So, with that, we can also address these threats. So, potential economic benefits. National monuments in western public lands have shown increased visitation just across the board, and that's one of the things, especially with Lakeport being a gateway community, that's one of the things, the reason why we think it's going to affect you guys in a positive way. Good amount of ecotourism, just visitation to the area. So, just as I've said before, some of the benefits of designation, a management plan between the Bureau of Land Management and the Forest Service, really putting this name and putting it in the National Landscape Conservation System is what this is really going to do, and really kind of provide like a boost thing for the economic resources in this area. So, these are, I'm going to just quickly breeze through these ones. There's just a couple slides of what you can do in there. There's rafting in the area. Snow mountain wilderness, which is mostly in Lake County, is also in the northern end of the area. The Eel River headquarters. A lot of forest activity in the area, especially in the Bureau of Land Management. Fishing. Birding. This area has the second largest population of porcupine-balled eagles in California. A lot of endemic plants, just due to the geology of the area. The area is actually a combination of three technical plates where they come together, so the geology therefore inherently affects biology, therefore creates a lot of endemic plants and animals. These are just some of the other types of areas in the, types of areas in the region. And just a bit further, a little more in the, near the snow mountain wilderness area. And this is kind of a, just a brief list of all the supporters, the California State legislators as a whole, but in particular, your representatives, Senator Del Don, Senator Mike McGuire, the Lake County border supervisors, over 200 local businesses, the three US reps in the area, Congressman Thompson, who's really spearheading and leading that, and he's been a real champion to this, along with Huffman and Gary Mede, who are also representing the area. Both California senators also introduced Bill, along with several gateway cities, a lot of them in Napa, just about all the cities in Napa. A lot of other recreational groups, International Mountain Walking Association, Mountain Country Force of America. I didn't put the Blue River Coalition, which is the OHB group, but they're also supported as well. This is just another picture of kind of where the snow mountain area is. That's it. Do you have any questions? I can take them or...
Yeah, why don't you hang there for a second and see if... Margaret, do you want to continue, or you just want to see if there's questions? I think we probably covered most of them from staff reports. Questions from council?
Well, Robert, I'm trying to figure who and how did you determine that there's three different technical plates in this area?
I was speaking with UC Davis Professor.
So, you actually do know?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, you do believe in continental drift?
All right, I can call up Professor Alton Forrest if you want.
With this designation, what, if anything, gets limited in that area?
So, in the legislation that Congressman Thompson has been working very closely with, a bunch of open town halls that he's, this project's going on for about seven years now, recreation does not intend to be limited, as long as it's responsible on the roads. OHB is still being, we still want OHB to be used, mountain biking, hiking, camping, as long as it's responsible, and on the bike track, that's kind of what we're, as long as we're walking. So, no limits in closing off roads or anything like that.
So, realistically, the, you mentioned the BLM and the Forest Service, how exactly does designation as a monument unify the management coordination? What's the, what's the plan?
So, it creates an advisory committee, and that would include a bunch of stakeholders, some city council members from the gateway communities, the Forest Service, the Bureau of Land Management, recreation groups, and that kind of thing, and they all come together and kind of really make a management plan on landscape scale, being that right now it's the Forest Service just here, and then the Bureau of Management here, they are not connected, so it's kind of just allows it for one big plan to come together.
And one of the things that occurs to me is that in some of those areas, there may be some invasive species, namely human beings, that are using the property in inappropriate manners, and maybe that could be addressed as well.
Correct, correct.
Sounds more true.
Yeah, I'm a little skeptical about us being gateway county, since we're separated by mountains and an entire lake, but... What?
Lusar.
Oh, Lusar, yeah. But I do see the definite benefits in consolidating resources to battle illegal marijuana growths. That I'm glad to see is at the top of the list. I know you didn't prioritize necessarily, but for me, that's very compelling, to enable multiple agencies to...
All right, at this point, thank you, Robert, and just stay with us there. You're welcome. We're going to open this up for any public comments. So, if anyone from the public would like to come up and have any questions or comment? Victoria, come on up. Please, as always, state your name for the record, and if you'd like it spelled correctly, please write it down.
I'm Victoria Brandon, DRA, I'm BLM. Just one little point, that I addressed immediately what you were talking about, about the agency collaboration that this will allow. This is not something that those of us who have been campaigning for this would ever even think of. It was brought up by the agencies themselves, the BLM and the Forest Service. So, they work in an environment where they're, have no common boss, they can't work together. They do work together, they call each other up and talk to each other, but there's no structure for it. This will allow them to set up partnership projects, and that will solve a big problem that's fiscal, that governments have budgets for certain periods of time, they don't spend that money, especially if it's grant money, they got to rush around at the last minute and find some way to spend it, or they lose it, and that's a very inefficient way to do anything. This will allow them, in those circumstances, to transfer the money to their partner, which gets it off their books, and then it is available to do the same project the next year, which is something that will allow a tremendous increase in efficiency in those federal agents, and they think that's a big deal.
Thanks, Victoria. Anyone else in the public like to make a comment or have a question? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Yeah, I would just like to add, and I was fortunate to meet with Robert, as I believe Councilmember Turner was, so, you know, there's a lot of information, and I will admit, in the beginning stages, I was a skeptic of being an OHBer as well as a mountain biker, but really, other programs have been put together. When you get OHBers, mountain bikers, equestrians, and hikers all together in support of any project, it is a task that has been approached well, because many times, the groups can go head-to-head. So, I think that that's just testament to due diligence that the group has done to put this together, Congressman Thompson as well, and, you know, it may be a stretch for the gateway, but, you know, the talent's in between us and the national forest, and which will eventually be this national monument, doesn't have a lot of hotel rooms, so I'm hoping those folks have to bleed over in the City of Lakeport, and eat at our restaurants, and ultimately, that can be good for us, plus we can offer the latest recreation as well. So, I think this is a step in the right direction, and for our future generations is a good move. And thank you very much, Robert, for making the trip up, and Victoria for being here too. Anything further from council? All right, we have a suggested motion.
I move to adopt the proposed resolution supporting the permanent protection of the Beriasus Snow Mountain region as a national monument.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And thank you, Margaret. Thank you, Robert, again. Item number B, under council business, public works superintendent, this is a disc golf course. Oh, I skipped one there. National night out. Margaret, would you like to...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city is being asked to approve cancellation of our regular council meeting on August 5th, 2015, this 14th, I think, that is the correct date, the first city council meeting in August, to approve the Lakeport National Night Out event on that date. This will be the third annual National Night Out. Last two have been very successful. Last year, we had a little bit of rain that kind of dampened the, probably the attendance a little bit, but even though it was still a good evening. The introduction of National Night Out, or America's National Night Out against crime, began in 1984 in an effort to promote involvement in crime prevention activities, community policing partnerships, neighborhood camaraderie, and to send a message to criminals, letting them know that neighborhoods are organized and fighting back. So, each year, the first year, we did it at the church, the Mormon church at the corner of 16th and Hartley, and then last year, we did it at National, excuse me, at Metro High, and this year, we're planning on having it at the new police station, if council approves the event and the cancellation of the meeting. And staff has requested the cancellation of the meeting, and the Lakeport National Night Out would be an opportunity for the community to meet and greet city council members also, and staff, all our departments there, and other staff members, and the local emergency personnel, so there'd be lots of different safety from different agencies throughout the county. And the city will provide hot dogs and drinks. The last two years, the Kiwanis Club had barbecues in forests, and I'm assuming we haven't approached them yet, but we'll be asking them again too.
We did already approach them.
Did you? Yes, yes.
Yeah.
So, it's very good at that. We appreciate that very much, and so, and that's basically, does anyone have any questions on the event?
Anything from council?
I just assumed we'll have the, I was asking the mayor earlier, will it have the building open, people will be able to go through it to a certain...
We're hoping.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just getting started now on the work, so, unless somebody's, as long as everything runs smooth, and people are available, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Be in there and have it open, so they can show me going.
Yeah, you can see my opening, you know, just...
Right.
People are going to see a little bit.
Right, we'll contact Kmart to find, just like the parking lot for the fire trials.
Well, they're one of your best customers, it's the least they can do.
Absolutely.
Hopefully not anymore.
Maybe that'll be, have a turning effect.
That's right. Anything else?
I just want to comment on the date on the proposed motion, August 4th, 19, excuse me, now 19, while I go back. Was it just me? 2015.
So, it's supposed to be the 4th?
It is the 4th, though, the dates are correct. I just looked it up to make sure.
It's the 4th to the 5th.
Oh, the 5th is in the right.
Right, ten years wrong.
No, the date in the suggested motion needs to be the 4th.
The 4th.
And the 5th.
2015, yeah.
So, they're both missing.
Yeah.
Anyone from...
It's still the first.
It's the first Tuesday of August. That hasn't changed.
Just like dyslexia, though, that is.
Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? All right, I'll bring it back to council for motion.
I'll move to approve the cancellation of the August 4th, 2015 Lakeport City Council meeting and the participation in the city of Lakeport in the National Night Out event.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything further from councils? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Margaret. Now, on item B, number one, our public works superintendent regarding the disc golf course at West Side Park. Good evening. Mr. Doug Gray.
Mayor, council members. Before you, we're bringing forth a request from the Lake County Disc Golf Club to enter into an agreement with the city to construct and operate a disc golf course at West Side Park. And the Lake County Disc Golf Club has been in our area for years and years. They currently have an agreement with a county for a facility at Highland Springs, and I don't know if any of you participate in disc golf, but I have played once, with my children, who probably whipped up on dad, so, but it was great fun, and it really got me interested in something that we could offer to all the citizens in Lakeport, because it's something that everybody can play, any age group, there's no exclusions, you don't have to be a super athlete, but yet you get some really good exercise chasing that thing all over the place. And so, we were trying to find things that, you know, really just opened up West Side Park to more of a general community, not necessarily happen to be an athlete and performing in a soccer or a baseball or that kind of thing, where it's not particularly... in a soccer, or a baseball, or that kind of thing, where it's not particularly a, per se, organized sport. There are rules and regulations like anything else, but it's something that you and a couple of friends can go out, you sign up for a tee time, when the tee's open, you go ahead and you play, how many games you have the energy to play. And so I found that really attractive, and I think that it's something that our young people can do, that's in an area that they can ride their bicycle out to. And having met with the guys, the great group, they came and made a presentation to the Park and Recreation Commission. The Park and Recreation Commission voted unanimously in support of the proposed project. And so we're bringing it to you, hoping that we can get a vote of confidence and go ahead and approve our request that we have listed here in the staff report. I do have two gentlemen, David and Jim, that are with the disc golf group, so they can add sort of more technical questions, if you should have technical questions. I think the staff report and then their proposal pretty much covered everything. There is no cost to the city, which was something that was very attractive to me, as far as in my department. You know, they're going to operate maintenance with their own funds. They're not asking for monetary support from the city at all. There is no fee to people that want to go play. And so I think that's a win-win for everybody. So, any questions?
Questions, council?
Well, I've played hundreds of times that I know of, and I used to love to play the moonlight rounds out there. The great thing about this is, is that the average person could come out with, like, a driver and a putter, and be on their way and have a great time. There's only one concern that I have, and you said that they could ride their bike out there. I don't know exactly where it is, but these guys, these pros, can throw the thing like 300 feet. If you get baked in the head with one of those things, it could knock you out, and I just, the court, the design of the course and the location, I think, is really important. I know I've played over at Low Gap, and if you're not really, really good, you do get a lot of exercise, because if it goes up the hill and goes down the other side, ends up on someone's roof. It's a horrible design. I hate that course. The one at Highland Springs is great. I love it, and they moved the tees around. It's a wonderful sport, and it's very inexpensive to get into. And the guys will come out, gals, a lot of gals, and they'll be as many as 100, and they're right across the street from Omera's and from shopping in Lakeport. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to get people into town, and they run tournaments. And if they do a good job designing, which I hope they do, and knowing you're baked on the head, I think it's, as you said, it's a real win-win, but it's so easy to get involved in, and it's very, it's, you know, you can get really hooked on it to where you want to be out there a lot, especially in the weather and the conditions like that. It's a great sport for all ages. You can do it with grandpa, mom, dad, whatever you want to do. So I think it's a wonderful thing. When I read about it, I was like, yes, this is a great thing. Other than the bake on the head, I don't think there's anything I could possibly bring, you know, in front of this. It's just that this course design is, if it's a good course, it could really bring people in from far and wide, because it's a wonderful sport, and I think that, once you get, it's very impressive, so I'm glad to hear this show up here.
And that's what raised my level of confidence, is we're dealing with a group that has, who designed and operates the course at Highland Springs. So they're coming to us already with a huge expertise, that they're willing to pitch in to make this thing a safe and attractive course for everybody.
Well, I know, being on the board with West Side, we discussed this, obviously, and initially, the thought was that this was going to go in and it was going to take over that whole area, you know, permanently, and they have a lot of other, you know, designs for that area, but the proposal here, other than the dinking thing, is that an actual?
I don't think that's the proper term.
Other than the dinking thing that.
That's Dougism.
Yeah. Other than that, the proposal to put this in, to maintain it, and to remove it as development goes through and stuff, is, I see it as a win-win.
Yeah, we were very clear, very upfront with them when they came to us, that there is a master plan for West Side Park, and that as that master plan develops, then the course will have to shrink, and then will come a point in time when we get to a point where then it just won't be peaceful anymore, and they fully understand that.
It's a huge chunk of property, though. It'll take a little bit to get that.
I told them I probably wouldn't be here by the time they had to pack it up and move out.
When will it be ready?
Well, I would have to let them answer that, but I would say that we're, if we can get approval and get this thing moving right now, we could be looking at some level, I would say by the end of summer. If, maybe sooner, a portion?
Yeah, we've got a lot going on right now. We've got tournaments and stuff coming up.
Safe to say it'll be ready for next year's use.
Yeah, this fall for sure.
Fall for sure.
Councilwoman Turner?
Do we have bicycle racks out there to make these?
That would be something that we would have to address. No, at this point in time, you know, Phase 1 and Phase 2 doesn't have bicycle racks. And so, you know, that would be something, and typically, our civic groups, you know, Kiwanis Lions and.
Rotary.
Rotary have all been horrendous in stepping forward and providing those kinds of things when we've let them know that we have a need. And Lakeport is truly unique and truly blessed with just a fantastic group of civic groups here that have just done wonders for our park systems.
Here she comes, old Turner. We're having a meeting tomorrow. I'll mention it.
Yeah, since you cover such a large acreage during the game, it would be nice to know you're.
Wouldn't be able to watch your bank the whole time, yeah. All right, thanks, Doug. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? Anyone?
Good evening, my name is Jim Getz. I'm actually the president of the local disc golf club called the Basket Cases. And this is a very important place for disc golf. You guys have all seen the baskets, the metal baskets we have out here. Well, that was made and invented by Manny and Edrick, and he lived here in the 80s. And he had a shop right up here on Bevan Street, and he would make the metal baskets here. He would actually put Lakeport California on them, and then they would go out throughout the United States, and he used to have a huge map in his shop, where he had little pins, you know, where all the courses he's set out to. So this is a very special place. We've had Highland Springs since 1980. He put that course in himself. We're really lucky to have it. Right now, we have another course that just got put in up at, it's actually called Black Rock Golf Course. It's the old Rock Roy at Bon Cop. Bo Moore bought that, and he just put the baskets in, working with one of our vice presidents, and wants us to be chartering stuff there for him. We also approached Mark at Buckingham, the owner of Buckingham, and we're just going to do a pin, we're going to put baskets in there as well, and those are going to be here in August. So that's two professional, you know, just huge courses, and we've got Hammond's, a technical course. So the plan for this West Park course, like you were saying, the flow, the flow's going to be, we're really going to make sure that there are no tees close to the baskets like in Low Gap. That's the most ridiculous design ever. The flow for this course is going to be where anyone, beginner or a pro, can go out there and play this course. We'd like to have two tees for every hole, one close for beginners, and then one further back for pros. And like I said, the flow, we really plan on having a flow for everyone. This is going to be like a professional only type or beginner only type course. We really want it to be a community course, and it's a great location, because everyone can see it often. People can just go out there and be doing something and just see it, who's that, you know, get interested and get involved. We do a lot of tournaments, too, here in the community, and when we do the tournaments, we go out and have businesses or sponsors. A lot of people come out of town, so we need hotels for them, a lot of, all the restaurants and stuff like that, makes a lot of money. It just brings in a lot of people from out of town. It's the largest, it's the fastest-growing sport in the country right now. We actually had a government ESPN twice in the last, like, four months, in the top of the top 10 highlights or whatever. Yeah, that's very good. But.
What about your design team?
How we design the course?
No, I mean, what kind of collaborative effort are you using to design? I know you go out and you look at the physical terrain and the trees that, you know, that are there, and then some of the minor trimming, but that's a key element, and setting something up is both challenging, but yet.
Yeah. What we do is we try to, because there's so many different types of shots out there, trust on the right, trust on the left, long deep ones, short ones. We kind of incorporate a little of everything, and that's how the flow will go. We don't want too many, you know, right hooks and a row, or, you know, left. So we try and put a little of everything in there, and with that area, it's got to create the way that the bushes are, it's got really kind of high bushes, but they create these natural greens, they're like the size of this room in some areas there, where you'd be able to, you know, have to chip up and in the bushes, and you have this medium green or basket thing in there.
Do you actually have a team of guys that are doing it, or is it like falling on one person?
It would be with the whole club designing, but it'd mostly be David Foltz. He's kind of, we picked him to lead this project. Like, we've got one of our vice presidents that's leading it at Black Rock, another vice that's leading it at Buckingham, I believe, David, you know. But then as he comes up with the plan, and then he basically will present to the club, we'll talk about it, and find out any kind of problems and that kind of stuff.
You got to make sure you talk to the council?
Oh, yeah. We don't have a choice. We're going to follow the shirt. Any other questions?
Anything else?
Actually, I'm just surprised, when you walk through town, you will see a yard, you will see, and it might be because.
Oh, yeah.
It's developed here, you'll see those.
Yeah.
I have one. I have a general format.
Oh, man, those are amazing.
Yeah, really heavy. It weighs about 90 pounds.
Yeah, bigger diameter pole and stuff, yeah. There's still, we actually got one back from Oklahoma, of course. I don't know if it was being changed out or something, but they have one of our Lakeport baskets, and they sent it back to us, and now it's back on our Highland Springs again.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, my name is Michael Green, brand-new Lakeport resident, three weeks here.
Welcome.
So excited. We have a lake and we have disc golf. I've been playing disc golf about 10 years, and most recently in Fresno, where I moved from, and before that in Penn Valley in Nevada County, east of here. We're actually served for a year on a park board there, where we had a disc golf course in a beautiful, multiple-use facility. So dinking happens with appropriate course design and good signage and any choke points. It really hasn't been a problem that we've seen out there. One thing that we were excited about at Western Gateway was to see the big arms come out and stretch, but also the young families coming out, parents throwing with their families, and it is a very fascinating sport, and it is very inclusive. I can also speak to the reputation of Highland Springs and the Steady Ed course, just a lot of history there, and certainly, the people involved here have been very good stewards of that course, and their reputation is not just here, but in other parts of the state. So I'm very supportive of this project. I'm sure they're going to do a great job with the design, I'm just hoping for an affirmative vote.
Thank you, and welcome to Lakeport. Glad to have you here. Anyone else from the public?
Hi.
Good evening.
First time here. Also a new resident at Lakeport. I'm from Alameda. Really happy to be here.
Pardon me.
It's called, I'm a farmer, Josh, T O T V. My god, my cat is a four-legged. I don't chase the disc down, you know. Are there going to be rules about the dogs? Can the dogs come? Are they going to have to remain on leash? He doesn't work to up on leash.
That's a good, that's a good question.
We don't have a leash law out there, do we, on West Side Park?
I don't even know where West Side Park is, so.
Those gentlemen, they'll, they can give you a location where it's back there, but I don't.
I don't think we're ever counted.
I don't, we have a leash law at Library Park, but I didn't.
Does it include all parks?
Okay, so we'll.
That'll be, that'll be something we'll have to, we'll have to look at.
Yeah, we can bring that back.
Yeah, and thank you. Anyone else from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. I think it's a great idea, and, you know, the school system, Lakeport Unified, they actually have a small course set up for the students there, that the kids, the little young kids who are in PE can go out and practice on the course, and it's in multiple locations up by the softball field and the basketball court. So I think it'd be great at West Side Park. I think what I would like to see, though, and this will be with Doug and the West Side Park Committee, is as the park does kind of infill with other projects, is to maybe not let this course go away, but try to do some real creative design work to at least keep some sort of a limited course there that can be played in different ways. I think once it's there, it'd be hard to take it away from people.
That's why.
Yeah, I definitely think we should work to keep it there. It may not be able to have 18 baskets, but, you know, maybe we can get down to nine and have, you know, multiple tee points to, you know, to make it an 18 course, and that would be my recommendation. But through their proposal, I mean, it looks like they've got everything together and planned for proper facilities, and it looks good to me.
I've heard at the schools sometimes that breaks down into Dodge Disc.
Well, the youth, thank you. Those would have been there when I was in. That definitely would have been Dodge Disc. Anything further from council questions? All right, we have a suggested motion.
I'll move to approve the concept set forth in the proposal and direct staff to prepare a written agreement with the Lake County Disc Golf Club to construct and operate a disc golf course at West Side Park. The form of agreement shall be acceptable to the city attorney and may be executed by the city manager.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Anything further from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Doug, and thank you, gentlemen, for making your time. I appreciate that. And good luck. We'll be looking forward to seeing those baskets out there. Item number C of the council business, compliance officer, this is exemption from AB 1826. Mr. Britton?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is a request to adopt a resolution opting to affirm an exemption from the requirements of AB 1826, which requires the establishment of a mandatory commercial organics recycling program. The staff report provides background information regarding the legislation, the legislation's requirements, and the city's eligibility for an exemption based on the current population of Lake County. As noted in the staff report, similar resolutions have been adopted by the county and the city of Clearlake. A draft resolution has been prepared for your consideration, and several options are also identified in the staff report. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions?
It's good to see you.
Yeah, I think this one's pretty straightforward. All right, seeing no questions, anyone from the public have any questions or comments on this agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for action.
I'll move to adopt the proposed resolution opting to affirm an exemption from the requirements of AB 1826, mandatory commercial organics recycling.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Anyone further in council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you very much. Council Communications.
I'll be firing the Clearlake High School baseball game tomorrow, the Battle of the Triangle undefeated for the rest of the year.
Yeah, towards their championship. Yeah, they're playing so well.
And then I have some other nasty business on Friday, a funeral to go to, but other than that, I have no further.
Are we going to honor that team?
I've gone to email the air and ask her about it, and I realized with the, just started this afternoon with all the problems we had, our email, I never did get to her back, so I will discuss that with her. Because I saw the newsletter, it really.
I'm wearing out.
There's three groups that went to championship.
Yeah, but they've got more, which game is this that they'll be playing? Is it a semifinal? Yeah, let's not do, get too crazy, and we don't want to jinx it. I'm just saying, just start planning things, and things go awry, and we should wait till it's done, and then, but no, it's a good idea. I think, regardless, we should do something for them, because they've had such a great season, and for any of the teams that matter to them.
I'm glad to, too. I was glad to know that they're going to be up today.
Definitely. Councilwoman Stone?
I'd like to just thank Councilman Parlet for covering some of my ideals in the last meeting when I was gone, and I'd like to hopefully sneak over to the game and watch him rap.
Councilmember Turner?
The only thing I have for a fourth is I will be attending Killstoke High School graduation, my son's graduating.
Congratulations. Proton?
School's out in Lakeport, and so watch out for the kids. Graduation ceremonies were amazing, and we have kids graduating from Clear Lake High School that are going to every college you can think of, really successful class, Stanford and everything in between, so really proud. It's a village, and we did it, woo!
Well, on the 21st, I'd like to thank all those that came out for the dock ribbon cutting ceremony in torrential downpour. And although it was raining profusely, there were still quite a few people, even people dancing in the rain, with umbrellas, some without, and that was probably one of the quickest ribbon cuttings ever, as we stood on the main section of the concrete pier to cut their ribbon as fast as we could. I appreciate everybody coming out for that, and we've received nothing but positive compliments on those docks. And I wish I could have been here this weekend to see the boats come back on Sunday, but I've seen some pictures already, and they look absolutely wonderful, so I was happy to see that. Also, the South Main Business Association meeting, greatly appreciate Margaret and her staff, all the apartment heads were there. You guys really had it down to a tee, answered the right questions. It was a very small group that came out, but really doesn't matter. If it's five, 10, or 100 people that are there, they're all business owners, and each one of their properties is equal in our eyes. So appreciate Councilmember Turner being there as well, and, you know, I think that good questions were answered, and we'll just keep moving forward. I think we're really doing, but I commend your staff, Margaret, on putting on definitely a good meeting for you and Horshon. You turned out really well. I did not attend the division meeting, and I think that's it. River Yarra Spring fling this weekend for anyone interested in having a good time up in Omera's, it's for their technology programs, River Yarra Elementary Schools, I'll be seeing that and taking some money out of people's pockets during the live auctions, so that's it for me. Kevin? Chief?
Do you want me to mention?
Yes.
Yes, I'm not sure if any council members saw emails from Lake City, which are here in the United States, one of the, I guess, CJS Appropriations Committee in the US House that is proposing to cut all of the cops funding money, or mandatory policing office, which would mean there would no longer be community policing grants. So we got, I believe, City sent out some sample letters that we may need to try to get out tomorrow, and may actually measure on that. However, Brad Donarado is supposed to call me in the morning. He just told me this evening that the White House advised that they wouldn't accept that, so it looks like that Appropriations Committee may be backing off of what they're doing, but we need to monitor that in the morning, and maybe, might get some letters out, may not, but I'll, I'm going to be in Yucaya working tomorrow, but I'll let you know as soon as I get here.
Well, they should have plenty of money, because they, obviously, with the hundreds of millions or billions they spend on the TSA and feeling miserable, they should, they could probably cut some money out of that, because they, you don't know what they're doing there, and they can give that to us.
Do you know I was going to go ahead and get those letters, the money, so are you ready to commit?
Absolutely. Yes, definitely need to get those signed and sent out, for sure.
They did advise, Mr. Thompson's office advised that they helped us in any way they could as far as securing, you know, crops on the, so we'll send communication.
Anything further? That's it. Kelly?
Just a reminder of the Staff Appreciation Day on Friday. I know somebody can't make it, but make it out of the bird a little bit.
Friday the 12th, correct?
Friday the 12th, yes.
We have 26 people sign up for baseball games, so...
Yeah, there's a, there's a big thing going on. I think it's going to, it's going to be a little bit of smack talk and everything else on that baseball game. Should be a fun day.
Health, of course, is challenging, you have to bet, it's really interesting.
Andrew, what do you think you have? Seeing? No, thank you. Dan?
Dr. Grant?
Mark?
I just want to mention, last week when we had the dock ribbon cutting and we were under umbrellas, some of us, most of it, so there was some lightning and thunder, and as a result, the next day, our super smart plant experienced a failure in one of its poles. So, Margaret, I just learned, came down, Margaret's been keeping close contact on the issues. We found what looks to be a replacement part for that, so hopefully it works. So we're doing everything we can to get that control issue resolved.
So, you know, I heard that the Record B had an issue too, that lightning may have struck one of those poles down there, so it was a problem for them, so they were, they were pretty close. David? Margaret, anything else?
I saw the report that that Wooden Glory on Sunday, the boaters loved our docks. They were very excited about it. So it was a really nice event. They were very, very happy. And I told them that they weren't the catalyst for getting it going when they said they couldn't, you know, use our docks anymore, so anyway, very excited, they were very excited about it. And I just wanted to mention the Lake of California Conference, the registration's open now, and if any of you know right now you're going, I will register you, otherwise let me know. It's November 30th, there are three days, so, and down the day it shifts, so please let me know, I'll make the reservations for you.
That's Wednesday at 3:00?
It's Wednesday the 30th.
Wednesday through Friday?
Through Friday, yeah.
We also got the delegate voting information today.
Oh, we did, okay, we'll be on the council.
And council members know now, for sure? I'm going.
I think I want to go. I just have to be back early Friday, because we have to come out by challenge.
That works, usually on Friday, it's light, it's easier to travel.
So we got four for sure, and then a couple of stuff you're going to have to do.
I'll have to get 800 stakes together before.
Is that all? Just 800?
Right.
Oh, Christ. Anything else, Margaret?[1754.02]